Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today's Tuesday, January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. It is ten AM. We have four members of the court present. And so with a quorum, we will call this meeting to order. Commissioner Kirkendall is out ill today, so please pray for his speedy recovery, and he'll be back with us next time. Everyone, please rise for the invocation. That will be delivered by Commissioner Cooper, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, we ask you to be with us today as we go about the business of the county. We ask you to help us make the right decisions concerning our citizens. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's okay with the rest of the members. Let's get down to item number six. This is special recognition of personnel and officials for meeting years of service milestones as follows. We're going to start with Ms. Jean Hardy, Rutherford Bridge Four, being recognized today for five years of service. Good morning, Ms. Hardy.
Morning.
Ms. Cook is going to present that to you, and then you'll have five minutes to make a speech.
Jean was at the office whenever I took office in January of last year. She kind of helped me get my feet on the ground and still doing so. She's kind of the mother hen of the hen house, and she makes sure that every, all the business is taken care of the way it's supposed to. I've given her some challenges with some computer work, and she definitely meets those challenges. And if she has some difficulties with it, she certainly has, because she has. She does a great job, and thank you for your time.
And I enjoy being there.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next is Sharon Whitley, Health Services. She's the Health Director, and she'll be recognized today for ten years of service. Ms. Erickson, are you going to handle that? Thank you, Ms. Whitley. Come on up.
I think all I can say is that you are our most interesting performance. I enjoy working with you. You're always helpful when I'm running and making progress. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I just want to add, whenever we were all working together, six counties had pulled together during the word "I don't say anymore." A lot of the other counties really thanked Hardin County for being involved with that. I bragged on Sharon quite a bit for her knowledge and experience and her contacts that she had. It was really helpful with getting some of the resources that we needed, especially in the beginning days of all that. So, thank you so much for all you've done, and we'll continue to do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then next, Ms. Latasha Jones, Health Services, the Assistant Health Director, is being recognized today for fifteen years of service. Good morning.
Good morning. Wow. I just want to thank you so much for having my back, your love, your support, and your dedication. You have been there to look good, and I love you. You have not wavered. Your support is not unnoticed or unappreciated, and I want you to know. I thank you, thank you, thank you, out of my heart. Couldn't have done this without you.
And last but not least, go ahead. Lisa Finn, come on up. And Ms. Cook is going to recognize Ms. Finn this morning for twenty-five years of service for Hardin County. And I just want to add, we did have one other person on the agenda that can't be here today, so we'll recognize her at the next meeting. Ms. Cook, go ahead.
You're grateful recognition of your continuing service and support. We do represent Lisa Finn, and we appreciate her for twenty-five years of service. She's now the longest-serving person in Hardin, in the Hardin County Tax Office, as Ms. Devin retired. Lisa is definitely an asset to our office. She's the most disorganized, organized person that you would ever know, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. Congratulations, Lisa.
If y'all could all come up to the front. Mr. Aiken wants to take a picture of all four of you together, please. Ms. Whitley, Ms. Jones.
Yeah, if you could get it from the left to the right, how y'all.
I'm right.
Yes, okay, yes, okay. You're Janine, I need Betty, Joe. Who's in? Who took it? Oh, okay. Okay, so I need Sheila.
We might have to do this.
Latasha. Yeah, y'all could hold those all up to your chest. Let me do a couple of pictures like this, and then we'll use the other camera also. Please smile, one, two, three. And let's see, one more. And. We'll use this camera also, to be sure. And here we go for one. And let's do this way, one, one, two, three. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we'll go back to item number three. Consider and possibly approve the January ninth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting minutes as presented by Connie Beckton, County Clerk. Motion by Commissioner Young, say goodbye to Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, consider approval of request to cancel all registered claims from January ninth, two thousand twenty-four, and approval of today's cash statement presented by Mrs. MacWilliam, County Treasurer. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, one hundred thirty-three thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars and forty-nine cents. On our cash report summary and general checking, we have two million, three hundred seventeen thousand, four hundred eleven dollars and twenty cents. At First Financial Bank, in the general checking special money market, ten million, forty-seven thousand, six hundred ten dollars and fifty-nine cents. In tax pool, three hundred thirty-six thousand, eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and five cents. For total in cash funds of twelve million, seven hundred one thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. Always prepare these reports on Thursday to get them in for the agenda. On Friday, Ms. Cook brought me an additional seven million dollars, and I did move that money into the general checking special money market, so we have an additional seven million.
Fantastic.
I think the previous was wrong.
Motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item five, authorization of pay county bills as presented by Ms. Angela Gore, County Auditor. Good morning, Ms. Gore.
Good morning. The pre-approved expenditures for January the tenth through the twelfth are six hundred thirty-two thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars and fifty-eight cents. Pre-approved expenditures for January the seventeenth are six thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars and forty-two cents. Expenditures for Commissioners Court today are four hundred ninety-five thousand, seven hundred eight dollars and seventy-six cents. We have a list of an additional bill for our health dental and life insurance in the amount of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. For total expenditures and transfers of one million, four hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred thirty-six dollars and two cents. Gross payroll for January the eleventh was five hundred ninety-four thousand, six hundred fifty dollars and seventy-one cents, and the total transfers for that payroll was seven hundred thirty thousand, eight hundred sixteen dollars and eighty cents.
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Cook, seconded by, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cooper was the movers. Seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Gore.
Thank you.
Number seven, presentation by Ms. Audrey Moody, Hardin County Four-H Horse and Rider Club member, on being a Texas Four-H Equine Ambassador. And good morning, Ms. Moody.
Good morning.
How are you doing?
I'm doing good.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. So, like you said, my name is Audrey Moody. I am a sophomore at Harden Jefferson High School. And in my very short high school career, I have been in many extracurriculars, but most importantly, Four-H. I am currently an equine ambassador. I was certified in the summer of two thousand twenty-three. And first of all, I want to thank, I couldn't be here without Ms. Tammy Goodman, because she knows everything about the county, district, and state levels of Four-H. And there's so many different opportunities and competitions and categories in that, but she knows about everything. And of course, I'm super grateful for her and our county extension agent, Ms. Katie Case. And of course, the Commissioners Court for allowing me to be here and talk. So first, I applied for the Texas State Equine Ambassador Program. It's a very long application. You had to do a video essay, and of course, because I'm here today, I was accepted. It began with a four-day short course in College Station on everything equine, from nutrition to the Texas Corps of Horse Association, respiration, artificial, and assimilation, and so much more. I heard from the Executive Director of the San Houston Race Park, which racing is the largest racing in con for equine in Texas. I heard from the lobbyist JP Laney, who got equine industry legal in Texas. He was probably my favorite talk by far, because it was so interesting on what he had to say. I got to hear from five different Texas A&amp;M professors, and then one San Houston University professor. And even though it was the equine ambassador short course, it was still an ambassador short course. And so Four-H has created a program that teaches not only, of course, the head knowledge for all the equine, but also the networking, public speaking etiquette, and business mindset you need to have if you're going to be in the equine industry later, or even just representing it. One of my favorite talks that we had was the etiquette dinner. Even though I might have failed it if it wasn't great, it was definitely my fun, the most fun by far. So after all of that, four days of just information dumping in my brain, I had to take a two-hundred-and-fifty-question test, had to get above an eighty on it to pass. It took me three hours, and I did it. It was a lot, it was hard. I had enough notes, and I had friends that helped me along. And the next is the hard part, but it's the part that you actually get the experience. So after you have the short course, after you take the test to become an actual equine ambassador hour, ambassador, sorry, you had to get over, or you have to get a minimum of forty volunteer hours. Now, they kind of hinted at it, but after talking to equine ambassadors prior to me, they told me that you really want to get over that one-hundred-hour mark if you want to be competitive for different opportunities later, like the advocacy academy, where we go to the capital and they teach us more of the ambassador part of equine. So that leads me to another program that because I was an equine ambassador, because I was a Texas representative of Four-H, I was able to apply for. The Norman Boulag Youth and Agriculture Program. It is a program that they take twenty-five urban and twenty-five rural students and put them together and just are like, solve these problems. Now, if you pass it, because not only do they make you think really hard on how to solve the problem you were given, but you also get taught by, again, people in the industry, which this time, this time, it's agriculture as a whole. And you have to take quizzes and do online classes every other Monday, seven to nine, so much fun. But if you pass it, at the end, you automatically get a twenty-five-hundred-dollar scholarship and maybe more. So what it is, is you have three in-person meets. Each meet is three days, and it's in the different atmospheres. So first, we go to College Station for the rural, and then we go to Houston, which is coming up in March, for the urban. And then last, we'll go back to College Station for our presentations to actual stakeholders. So the problems are on these three wicked categories, water insecurity, food insecurity, and land infraction. And in each of these categories, there are three different teams, and each team's about three to four people. For me personally, I was in the food, and I am in the food insecurity. And my problem is to how, what is one solution we can make up, create, that can help food deserts in both rural and urban areas? Now, I'm not, we haven't gotten very far as the last meet where we present it to actual stakeholders, and they can actually use our ideas for, in the industry somewhere. That's in like May, and so we're not that far yet. So I want to talk about a little bit about Norman Boulag, the namesake of the program, just because he truly embodies what this program, Four-H, is trying to do with youth around the world, or around Texas. So Norman Boulag is known as the father of the Green Revolution. So what happened was Teddy Roosevelt went down at the end of his presidency to Mexico, just him and his wife, no one else. He strolled in, and he realized how destitute Mexico was when he went. They could barely feed any of their people, children were starving on the street. And he believed that as the United States, because we were more financially stable and successful, it was our job to help fix it. But when he went back, he talked about, talked to Truman, which was the next president coming up, and just like, how are we going to fix this problem? Well, because of political tensions, the United States government itself couldn't do anything. So instead, he got the Rockefeller Foundation to send Norman Boulag down to Mexico to see what he can do. So pretty much what happened is that took a while, but it did happen. Norman Boulag was able to genetically modify a wheat that could be planted in, from the south to the north of Mexico, that could grow. And whenever Norman Boulag first came, they could barely feed half of their people. But when he left, Mexico was actually exporting wheat to different countries. And then after that, he went on to help other countries like Bangladesh and Pakistan. He believed that if there was any war and fighting, it was usually because the people were hungry. His life truly showed that it's important to get out of your comfort zone and face your fears to try and do the impossible. And with all these programs that I've been in, it's been definitely out of my comfort zone, but I've been doing things that I didn't think were possible. They love to put us in situations that they don't prepare us for, they're just like, do it. For example, in the first meet at the Norman Boulag, they walked us into this poultry center at Texas A&amp;M. And I was like, cool, birds, like, whatever. Well, when we get in the door, we see tables, and on these tables, we see scalpels and scissors. We're like, what are we doing? And then they bring in the chickens. We got to dissect chickens that were killed thirty minutes before we came, so they were still warm. They did tell us, we just did it. But things like that make you grow and realize that there's so much out there and that you can do so much more. And then even with the ambassador short course in itself, it's not just what I do. Personally, I ride roping cowhorses, which is like, it's a competition which tries to get like what people actually do on a ranch. It's not roping or barrel racing. It's like going on trails and breeding a cow to make them go where you want it, but without a rope, essentially. However, in the short course, I met ropers. I met people that showed Hawthorne horses and Western Pleasure. I met people who didn't even have horses, but did horse judging or horse apology, which is a competition that is based on horse head knowledge versus, I couldn't, I couldn't do that. I don't know enough. And that shows that there's something for everyone in Four-H, because not only is there the equine ambassador, ambassador program, but there's also the fashion and photography and water and livestock and so much more. And then with all this knowledge, when I came home, it really showed that if they can do so many things, incredible things, with about thirty students, then imagine what could happen in my county, specifically in my own county Four-H club. And so for the past couple of years, the county as a whole has grown in Four-H members, but for my club specifically, we've actually gotten smaller to about maybe five people that came regular just because of leadership change. And so this year, though, I was able to talk to the club manager, and we did it a bit as a highlight, and it was about a mock auction, and we had real things, but fake money, that the kids could auction off and actually get these things. And that brought, from five people to over thirty people came to this club meeting. Now, of course, it's not just about me, it's about all those people that went into it, but just those are the things that Four-H can do to grow. And so like I said before, Four-H has something for everyone, whether it's equine with so many different opportunities, or just as a whole. So thank you for your time and for listening. Do y'all have any questions?
Ms. Moody, I think you have a few people with you. Would you like to introduce those?
Of course.
Your guests?
So right, starting from the left, we have Ms. Tammy Goodman. She is my county extension agent.
Nope. Person.
Person, she's my person.
We know Tammy.
And then we have my mother, who drove me to everything, including all those one-hundred hours I've got, so she's definitely the trooper.
Yeah.
And then my father, who definitely is the heart and the perseverance and the motivation to keep going.
And did they teach you to speak publicly, or where'd you get that from?
Definitely, so my father is a pastor of First Baptist Beaumont.
Okay.
And he believes that you should be able to tell your testimony, and with that, you have to know how to tell a story and tell it good.
Well, you do a great job.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members of the court have anything?
Just congratulations, you've done a great job, and you're doing a lot better public speaking than I am. I know well about stepping out of your comfort zone, so you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
We're very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight is consider approval of request by Mr. Dell Wilker, Hawthorne Field County Airport FBO, to amend the fiscal year twenty-four airport budget by transferring twenty-four thousand, four hundred sixty dollars from the airport fund balance to zero-two-two-six-six-four-five-seven-zero equipment. This for purchase of a camera system and self-serve human terminal. Mr. Cooper?
Yes, Mr. Wilker, nice day on the constant communication in reference to activity out at the airport. He has kept me up on all this information that he has requested, and I would move that we approve this.
And motion by Commissioner Cooper, say goodbye to Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item nine, consider approval of request by Mr. Dell Wilker, Hawthorne County, Hawthorne, he's the FBO, to apply for the American Rescue Plan Act Airport Grant and Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act Aviation Grant. Commissioner?
Yes, again, Mr. Wilker, I have spoken in reference to this. First, my memory was, Dale, there's no county match on this particular grant you're applying for. There's no. No match. Okay. And I would move that we approve this request.
And motion by Commissioner Cooper, say goodbye to Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Wilker. We appreciate all you do at the airport.
Thank y'all for your support.
Yes, sir. Item ten, consider approval of an order authorizing Texas Independence Day fireworks sales beginning February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, and ending in mid-ninth, March second, two thousand twenty-four.
Submove.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Cooper, say goodbye to Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? I don't think we're going to have to worry about a drought. It doesn't apply. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item eleven, consider and possibly authorize the following fiscal year twenty-four budget amendment. General fund, the loan to sewer improvement, Texas CBBG grant, to pay invoice to Jet Aeration in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, three hundred eleven dollars and eighty-seven cents, until the grant funds are received from the Texas Department of Agriculture. I know a little bit about this. I know that there's been some hangups with the TDA on reimbursing those funds. There's some information that they told us we didn't have to submit, then they changed and said we did have to, and we got it submitted. In the meantime, Jet Aeration is a small business that has requested numerous times that we pay them, and I believe that we should go ahead and pay that amount, loan it to the grant fund, and when we get the money from TDA, it'll go back in there. And that should happen, I guess, is probably sixty days, it might be a little longer, but that's my guess. And motion by Commissioner Young, say goodbye to Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twelve, consider approval of request by Mr. Alex Parker, Public Affairs Administrator, to approve replant of Lot Seven, Beaumont Colony East, a subdivision of Record in Volume Three, Page seventy-nine, fact records of Hardin County, Texas, in the Lot Seven A and Seven B of Beaumont Colony East, John Bryan HRS survey, abstract number seventy-three, located in Precinct One. So again, I'll defer to Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Judge. Mr. Parker stays in contact with each commissioner when it's dealing with something in their precinct, and we have discussed this, and engineers have approved it. So I would move that we approve this request.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Cooper, say goodbye to Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item thirteen, consider request by Mr. Aaron Tucker, Emergency Management Coordinator, to adopt four resolutions authorizing grant submissions, each of which do not require any local match, and these are annual grants that we apply for. First one is Resolution five dash twenty-four, authorizing submission of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, funding application to the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division. The next, item B, Resolution six dash twenty-four, authorizing submission of the State Homeland Security Program Funding Application to the Office of the Governor, Homeland Security Grant Division. Item C is Resolution seven dash twenty-four, authorizing submission of the State Homeland Security Program Competitive National Priorities Funding Application to the Office of the Governor, Homeland Security Grant Division. And then Resolution eight dash twenty-four, authorizing submission of the State Homeland Security Program Competitive National Priorities Funding Application to the Office of the Governor, Homeland Security Grant Division. This is a request made by Hardin County ESD Number Two, requested by Jimmy Blanchard, Fire Marshal. What is the amount of that one, and what's it for, the last one?
Yes, sir, it's the, we presented last time, it was the X-ray machine. It was not funded the time before last when we applied for it, so we're going after it again. The grant will be, the max is seventy-five thousand that we'll apply for. That should come in, I believe, the last twelve was sixty-nine thousand for that device.
And then just to go back and say that none of these require any local match, correct?
There is no local match on them, as you know.
Thank you. So not approved?
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Cook, say goodbye to Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fourteen, presentation by Commissioner Cooper regarding Hardin County Citizens Collection Station Finance Information and Consider Approval of Request to Increase the Current Permit Rates. We have some information that's been put together by Commissioner Cooper in our packets regarding the finances. He's going to go over that with us and then recommend some increases to those rates. Commissioner?
Thank you, Judge. Here about two or three weeks ago, Commissioner Cook and I attended a meeting in Jasper County with a county judge and a commissioner, also a commissioner from Orange County and then Bob from Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission in regards to how each county handles their trash pickup, collection, whatever, however you want to word it. And just kind of networked to find out how they done things, and they wanted to know how we done things. I think they are looking into getting permits online like we are, because they take money at their location. But anyway, throughout all this, I had my secretary put together, and I'm sorry to the audience for not being able to see this, but the other commissioners have a copy, but putting together a form here, starting in two thousand nineteen, for what we paid to have the dumpsters hauled off and emptied, and then the salary of the person that we have out there. We took a nineteen thousand, six hundred ninety-six dollar loss that year. And for the permits purchased that year, we only took in a thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars. And it goes off from two thousand nineteen through this year currently, and total, we're in the red, a hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. I don't think that this, what we offer out there will ever be a form of taking in any revenue, really. We're providing our citizens with a service which I think is important. But after comparing the rates that we have to other counties and jurisdictions, we were real low on our rates. So the recommendation I'm making to the court today is to increase our rates. Currently, for a truck bed of trash, we only charge ten dollars, so I'm asking us to, I'm proposing to increase that to twenty dollars. For a trailer up to ten foot, we're currently charging fifteen, I'm asking to up that to thirty. For a truck bed and a trailer up to ten foot is twenty-five, so I'm asking to go to fifty on that. And then for a trailer over ten foot with a maximum of thirty foot, we currently charge forty, I'm asking to go to fifty. And last but not least, on a truck bed and trailer over ten foot, we currently are asking fifty, I'm asking to go to seventy on that. And I would put that in the form of a motion. I think what we should do is try this out for a few months to see where it brings us on our money. And then one of the jurisdictions over in Jasper County, they do not have to pay for a company to come remove their trash. They own their dumpsters, they own the trucks that haul the dumpsters, so they haul them off themselves, and they have one specific dumpster for metal that they actually sell, and that brings in money. So I think that's something that we might look into in the future. Right now, I would just propose that we increase our rates.
And motion by Commissioner Cooper to accept the proposed rates as presented. Have, seconded by Commissioner Young. Commissioner Cooper, on these. Commissioner Cooper, on these proposed rates, um, do you feel like you're still, uh, coming in less than, uh, some of the surrounding counties? Or have you, uh?
I am, I am, Judge. However, some of the, uh, surrounding counties, uh, are charging by weight instead of, uh, and that's kinda hard, because the person I have out there would have to estimate the weight.
Right.
Uh, so I've come up with this, and I, I wanna do a trial run to see how it brings us up, and I'll have my secretary do another, uh, graph in about six months on that.
I think, and as, these are still very fair rates, I believe.
I think so as well.
It's, it's a, a good service for the citizens, and, uh, I know Commissioner Cooper's asked me a couple of times, do we really wanna keep doing this? Because it is a hassle, and, uh, I just wanna state that, uh, I appreciate him taking that on. It's out there by the airport in his precinct, and, uh, uh, there's times where there's no, uh, customers and other times where they're lined up out there, and so I, I appreciate you doing that, and I think these rates are very fair. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item fifteen, consider approval of request by Ms. Misty Sims, purchasing agent, to authorize county judge to execute a one-year extension to master services agreement for professional consulting services between Hardin County and Tetra Tech, uh, who was awarded the number one agreement for, uh, monitoring debris monitoring services. This will be amendment number two. Anything you wanna say about that? This is just an extension, correct? And motion by Commissioner Cooper, saying goodbye Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item sixteen, consider approval of request by Misty Sims, purchasing agent, to authorize the county judge to execute a one-year extension to professional services agreement between Hardin County and Thompson Consulting Services, who was awarded number two for debris monitoring services. Same thing?
So moved.
And a motion by Commissioner Cooper, saying goodbye Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seventeen, consider approval of request by Misty Sims to authorize the county judge to execute short form of agreement between Hardin County and Schaumburg Inc. Incorporated, awarded number two for general engineering services.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Young, saying goodbye Commissioner Cook. And, uh, just to refresh everyone's memory, they were number two to, um, uh, Levins Engineering?
Yes, sir.
So if Levins has a conflict, we go there and number two to handle those engineering services. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eighteen, consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agent to solicit bids for emergency disaster temporary debris site, or sites.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Young, saying goodbye Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And I think you told me the other day, the site we're currently using on four-twenty-one is probably not gonna bid this time. Is that right?
Correct. Mr. Bro passed away this last year, and, um, his sister, who was the other owner, she's selling. And the people who are, I guess, going to purchase it or so far that potentially gonna purchase it are not interested in using it for debris sites, so.
Okay. So we'll see what we, yeah, we may not get anything, but we'll see what happens.
I've made a couple of phone calls. I've been looking at some large pieces of property, um, okay, the stable, and I've almost, uh, the, the old dump on seven-seventy. I've made a phone call to them, and, um, we're going to send them the information. Um, it's pending TCAQ approval. So hopefully, we can find a couple of places that are suitable.
Okay. Sounds good. All in favor?
Aye.
I think we oughta go there, didn't we? Won't hurt to go there, yeah. Any opposed?
We had a motion.
Approved twice. Yet a motion was by Commissioner Young, saying goodbye Commissioner Cooper. Number nineteen, consider and possibly approve updated job description for the epidemiologist, surveillance specialist, MA physician in the Health Services Department, as requested by Melinda Harrington, Human Resources Director. Any major changes to that job description?
I think the only major change was that we added that they, um, had to be a medical assistant. They had to be certified.
Okay.
And that was.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Young, saying goodbye Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number twenty, consider approval of request by Connie Beckton, the county clerk, to amend the fiscal year twenty-four county clerk preservation fund budget as follows, in order to replace an employee before the estimated payroll payout payout is absorbed by the current budget. The total amount that's coming from the preservation fund balance is one thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars, and that'd be spread out over all of these, uh, salary and fringe line items here. I'm sorry. It's coming from the preservation fund balance, also from the dental insurance line item in the county clerk's budget, that's a hundred and twelve dollars, and from the life insurance and county clerk's, uh, budget of eleven dollars. And it all goes to supplemental death, salaries, back of taxes, health insurance, retirement, workers' comp, and state unemployment as listed on the, uh, budget in those amounts. I'm sorry, on the agenda in those amounts.
So moved.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Cooper, saying goodbye Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-one, discussion on any other non-agenda item without taking action, including reports from elected officials, department heads, or announcements which may be of interest to the public. Um, I checked with, uh, all commissioners, it said for Commissioner Kirkendall on a special meeting for January the thirtieth at ten AM, and it looks like everybody's available, so we'll have a special meeting on that date. I know the elections administrator has some business that she needs attended to quickly, and so does the sheriff. If anybody else has anything that can't wait until, uh, February the thirteenth, I believe is our next regular meeting, please, uh, submit that to us by noon on Thursday, so we can get it on the agenda. And then the Hardin County Election Commission has its second meeting on February the sixth, twenty twenty-four, at eleven AM here in the Commissioners Court Room. Those are two announcements that I had. Does any member of the court have anything?
Uh, yes, Judge. I don't know if, uh, we need to go back to number fourteen and modify, or if I can just put it in the record. Uh, my recommendation is gonna be for those fees to take place, uh, February the first.
Just, uh, let's change that. So the motion is to, uh, uh, increase the permit rates as presented effective February first, twenty twenty-four?
Yes, sir.
And that is your motion?
Yes.
And a second by Commissioner Young. Any other discussion regarding that item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes again.
Thank you.
As amended. Any other discussion items from any other commissioner?
I'd just like to announce that my Parkway Life concrete ditch has been completed one hundred percent, and MK did it and did a fantastic job.
It's being used this week.
Yes, it is. Yep.
Any official present, uh, have any, uh, discussion items, any announcements, any reports? Hearing none?
No.
And motion by Commissioner Cooper, saying goodbye Commissioner Young to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn. Have a great week. Try to stay dry and well.